At six thirty, I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming. And remind council members to please speak into your microphone so everyone can hear. People here in the back of the room. Can you hear?
Hello?
I know you're speaking to me.
I'm speaking to everyone up here.
Can you hear me?
I want to make sure everybody can hear.
So what's wrong with my mic here? Am I supposed to yell?
It's working sound.
Is that better?
It's working.
And closer to your mouth. Now try. Yeah, that was helpful. I'm honestly trying. I'm trying to read my agenda and I'm working at it.
Okay, alright. Alright, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move for approval of the agenda for November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. I second.
Moving second, during the discussion on the agenda. All those in favor say yes. Those who say no. Agenda is approved. Next, we have a special presentation of the annual audit.
Alright. I'm Matt Braydeveld. With Braydeveld Hapner, we conducted the audit as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four this year. Just first, I wanted to start by saying thank you to the board and to all of the staff here at Playhouse for having us out again this year. Melissa always has things very well, and Brooke always has things very well put together for us. It's always, always good to come out here. So I'll start on page one of our audit report. It's the most important thing first, is our opinion on the audit. Second paragraph there, you can see in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. That is a good, clean audit opinion. That's what you want at the end of one of these. I'm happy to report that you have that. Next, I'm just going to go through a slideshow here and touch on some of the financial highlights throughout the audit, so if you can go to the next slide here. First, um, first slide here is referring to the government-wide statements, which are the full accrual-based statements that are on pages thirteen to fifteen of your report. This is just showing your expenses and revenues by program. So the expenses that are in blue, the revenues are in purple. This shows how much each program is eating, basically eating into that general revenue, mostly your property taxes. As you can see, public safety is the biggest, the biggest one taking away from the property tax revenue, which is pretty typical of what we see at most cities. Your public works, you see your revenues actually are higher than your expenses. Most of that is due to various contributions that you guys have this year from the TIPA. And then Act fifty-one funding that comes directly from the state that can't be spent on anything but that. Next slide. Here's your revenues by type and your government-wide statements. As you can see, property taxes are the biggest portion of that, which is expected. You had a large share of capital grants this year as well. The biggest factor in that is you have your TIPA that paid for, I don't know if it was streets or sidewalks off the top of my head, but the TIPA paid the city for that and then that gets classified into capital grants. So it looks a little, a little bit different than what you might expect, but regardless, property taxes are the biggest portion of the revenue and the, or biggest portion of your general revenues, as would be expected. On to the next. So this is now on to the fund statement, which is what you're probably a little more used to seeing on a month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter, whatever it is basis. And this is on pages sixteen to nineteen of your report, this will be referring to. So you can see the general fund revenues there, the over-five years in the paragraph. Zero property taxes revenue has been steadily increasing over the past five years. That is due to increases in property values. A rent house is worth more, means that millage brings in more cash. That's not due to an increase in the millage at all. You can see there's a decent-sized uptick in your other revenue this year. That's mostly due to higher interest rates, meaning you guys had higher investment returns this year. On to the next. So this is just a longer time period of your property tax revenue, showing how they've gone up over the years. Once again, that's not due to an increase in the millage, that's just an increase in property tax values, or property values. We can go to the next slide. So here's your expenditures by function in the general fund. Once again, that's over five years. There's nothing too exciting here. Public safety's down slightly. You had a big uptick in your transfers out. That was due to street projects that were paid for out of your capital improvement fund. You transferred some from the general fund for that. And then you had some other, that was mostly public works projects. I want you guys repave some streets in your cemetery, which is a pretty good chunk of that. Now we got to the next slide. So this chart here is your fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. General fund fund balance, that is, shown over the past six years, seven years. That blue flat line there is the board policy that you guys set. You set a minimum of thirty-five percent. Dip below that for a couple, barely below that for a couple of years. Happy to report that is increasing again and you guys are above that policy. If anything, I would say that policy is probably a little bit higher than what we typically see. So your fund balance, I would say, is healthy compared to other cities of similar sizes. Now we can go on to the next slide here. This is touching on your water and sewer funds. So this slide here is the sewer fund. This is on pages twenty to twenty-two of your report, if you have that in front of you. Once again, it's just over the past five years. At the top there, you can see your revenues outweigh your expenses. That means that your rates that you have set are doing enough to cover your expenses. And then we can go to the next slide in the water fund. Same thing is happening here. Your rates are high enough to cover your expenses. Obviously, as I'm, I'm sure you're aware, that doesn't always paint the full picture with miscellaneous capital projects ongoing and things like that, that eat away at cash. So having a little profit in those funds is a good thing, which you do. Other than that, that's under the presentation portion. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have about the audit. Anything that you want to dive into a little bit further or?
Anyone on the council have any questions for me?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to get started here. The, um, I'd like to talk about the water issue. We had, um, it goes back to a year or two ago. You actually mentioned it in last year's audit.
Yep.
In the cover page. We had five hundred and eighty-four customers who were undercharged. And that was for a total of forty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Was that water only or was that water in sewer?
I would have to go back and look. I, I want to say it was water only, but I, I don't remember off the top of my head what I was thinking.
And, um, that was, that loan, that was brought up at last year's audit, in your cover page last year. And you were told that that issue was being resolved, right, at that point? That you were, that the city was in the process of collecting it, is the way that I took it?
Yeah.
And then that didn't happen?
Yeah, so basically, we uncovered that issue in the twenty twenty-three audit. And as of June thirty, twenty-three, we booked a receivable for that amount. So, you know, receivables and then that added to your revenue as well. Because our understanding was the plan was to collect those revenues and then this year, in the process of auditing, we noted that they were, that receivable was just reversed.
Right. In last year's audit, it was mentioned as it's in the process of being taken care of. And I guess this isn't really a question for you, but I'd like to know why the, you know, why that was written off. Forty-one thousand dollars is a lot. I was looking at my water bills. I pulled them all out, looked at them and, um, I wasn't one of those that, that got the free water. My guests are partially paid water. But it, it was, um, when you take that, that forty-one thousand dollars and divide it by five hundred and eighty-four customers, it comes out to seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents apiece, which is way more than a error on my water bill with the debt. Does that mean that there's a bunch of industrial in there too? I don't know. It was?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. I just have a big problem with that because when I ran a business, if I made a mistake, even if it was, even similar to that, I would have gone back and tried to fix it. And I don't think it's right that we gave up forty-one thousand dollars and I just think that's wrong for when you call it up.
Anyone else have anything they want to say? Seems not. Thank you for that report.
Yes, thank you.
Move on with the-
Mayor?
Yes?
We do need a motion and support to accept the audit and submit it to the state, to the town.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit and send it on to the state.
Second. Moved in second. Is there any other discussion on this? You will call, please.
Uh, Seguio?
Yes.
Holmesrum?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Philibrand?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Sulzer?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Good. Thank you very much. So now we are on to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes.
On the notes for last, for the last work session. I think the notes were incomplete as pertaining to the appointments policy. And specifically, if you remember, we discussed that at quite some time. And towards the end of that discussion, Scott said that he was, we, we came to kind of a consensus that if a nomination was not approved, that the seat would not automatically be refilled by the existing board member. And Scott had talked about he would make a change to something in the policy. And I think he said section, sentence two of paragraph two. I can't see, I can't say exactly what that is because I haven't seen a copy of the most current policy. And I think that that's an important issue to call out.
Yeah, with Brendan, I've talked about the process. Probably after the end of this month, we'll start that process of the appointments, which will include the latest revision, and I'll get with Will as far as how that wording should be presented.
I just didn't want it to be, um-
No, I'd marked it down on my appointment, the latest draft. So we'll, we'll have a polished-up version for you as you start the process of making the appointments.
Anyone else?
I have a few questions on the council table. Page three of six. Building Inspection Department, Horizon Property Management, annoying ordinance violation to different occurrences for seventy-five dollars. Are these both the same property and where is the property?
Um, I don't know offhand. I did not bring those with me, but it was two separate occasions. And that is handled through Mesquita Charter Township as far as, because, um, I don't know how many violations it requires prior to us going in and having the property mode and then billing it to the property owner. I can double-check this, what properties, let council know.
How do, how do we end up getting reimbursed for this? I know you put a lien or whatever on the, on the property taxes for it, but-
Um, we have, basically, it's going to be a bill generated by Mesquita Charter Township. And failure to pay it will allow us or the township to follow up on other legal remedies to collect it. I don't think it automatically becomes a lien until a certain period of delinquency.
Okay. Uh, on the same page for the Playhouse, we have three different things that are ticket pass-through. They don't understand what that is. I'd like somebody to explain it to me.
Sure. A ticket pass-through is where we have a rental at the Playhouse and somebody's renting the facility and we help sell, we sell the tickets to our LUS ticketing service. We charge them a certain fee or a certain percentage and then that, they get the ticket, they get the ticket, um, revenue from that event because it is a rental for us. So that's what that, that is.
So they're, they're paying us to rent the place and we're giving them money back, basically.
Well, so yeah, so, so say you have a band, you know, Joe Blow's trombone band and he comes in, he rents the theater for eight hundred and fifty dollars, which is our standard rental, plus any of the other expenses that we have. We charge a fifty-dollar ticketing setup fee to do it through our LUS ticketing service. And then we take ten percent of the ticket sales and then the rest goes on to them because it's basically, they're holding the event. It's not being produced by the Playhouse. So it's a kind of a guaranteed revenue for us.
Why, why are there different amounts percentages of the pass-through?
Uh, that depends on negotiating, sometimes it's a negotiated thing with the town, with the act. Some people, we do sixty, forty. They get sixty, we get forty after expenses. It really just depends on who we're working with as far as an agent and what the act will basically require. So that's why the numbers are different.
Just seems like giving back an awful lot of money to me. One other thing I have on the Playhouse is the, uh, mileage reimbursement for seven hundred and three dollars and fifty cents. What is that for? Pardon me?
I think I've got it. Um, basically, the assistant manager had gotten called in to replace a, a director who bailed at the last minute for a production. And basically, Cindy Beth Davis is, was working remotely from her home up in Pentwater. Had not anticipated having to come down a number of times to basically direct the show. And we did verify this with our city attorney that that is a legal reimbursable expense. So we basically did it this one time and it's, it's basically been explained that this is going to be a one-time rare occurrence. And I believe that was probably ten or twelve trips back and forth.
It may be legally reimbursable, but I don't think it's appropriate. That's a lot of money to charge for driving a car.
Well, it's based on IRS mileage rates.
Right. It's legal, but I don't think it's appropriate.
I agree.
Were you done, Scott?
Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
I have one too. On the, on page three of four, um, Prime New Hope has, had the invoice here for payment of seventeen thousand, three eighty-eight. And that's shown, some of it is shown as being Tanuary Bay Phase Two. I, I'm not aware that they've done anything in Tanuary Bay lately.
Uh, yep. Basically, all of the infrastructure is reviewed by Prime New Hope as well as environmental submittals to the city. They have kind of taken over that role from bar engineering. And definitely, I don't know if it's Phase Two, if it's actually Phase Three, because eventually we do acquire the water and sewer systems in that development. So the full seventeen was not just down at Tanuary Bay.
Right.
Probably most of it is still on Warner Street.
Okay.
Any else? No? Alright, all those in favor of the consent agenda say yes.
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 Those who say no?
No.
Consent agenda is approved. Alright, we'll move on to messages. I'd like to start off and say that I'm, want to give kudos to our DPW crew for the excellent job they did on leaf pickup. As far as I know, they, they got everything picked up. I haven't heard any problems with it, so they did a great job. I also want to commend them for the excellent job they've done on the Christmas decorations that they put up. Heard from everybody how wonderful they think it looks. I think it looks great and I'm proud of our community. We'll move on to council. Steve, you got anything for us tonight?
Um, I was wondering, we're going to have, we got to discuss, well, I'll leave that until we get to the resolution. Anyway, I guess, yeah, I would have to agree on the leaf pickup. It's been great. And also echo what you said about the Christmas decorations. They look really nice and sure.
I was going to say the same thing again. Give kudos again. I mean, we even gave everybody an extra weekend, so. Because I definitely, even though Friday was supposed to have been the last day, I saw people Saturday and Sunday doing their leaf, so.
Neighbors are gone and that was, they put those out. So that would have been this morning.
Yep. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Um, boy, it sounded like an echo, but yeah, the, the Christmas lights look awesome. Congrats on the guys for finding everything we needed, the Santa, the reindeer. My understanding is the sleigh was their construction.
Oh, that was actually Officer Chris Molyneux.
Oh.
And he basically did that in one day.
So put everybody to work. But yeah, it looks great, so I've heard nothing but good things on it, about it.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm, same thing with me, on the lights in particular and the leaves, more kudos, that's good and I guess I'll leave it at that.
Echo and ditto.
Yay! Can you make that unanimous?
As former Escalade Mayor Hatch would often say, ditto. If you remember, um, that was a common, a common catchphrase of his. I did want to mention that last week I wrote.
You moved your chair back.
Oh, no, so I, I realized last week, it was a year that that I was on council, so I just wanted to say how much I've appreciated serving with fellow council members and I've enjoyed it and appreciated them to honor and I'm learning some things as well. Even old dogs.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to public comment. Remind folks that please limit your comments to three minutes and direct them to the council. And this is essentially a comment section, not a griddle the council.
Ryan Regal, Pitkin gift, tossed by Pitkin, Pitkin Sales Shop and Harwood Flats. I'm a partner in all those. Um, I would echo the leaf pickup and decorations look great. Please keep it up with the sidewalk snowplow, thank you. I'm here to talk about something else, though. The hundred thousand dollar loan to the Playhouse, I support this. I support it, but we need oversight. We all know nonprofits took a hit during COVID, there's no argument there. I, I'm at several nonprofit boards and they took a hit with COVID. Sadly. We also know that the Playhouse is a valuable, valuable asset to this community. Now, to make sure these funds are paid back, and maybe you guys have already worked on some of these things, these are just suggestions. How about a three-person finance committee with the mayor, the city manager and an outside volunteer accountant to make sure these funds are paid back? Maybe we need to think differently with the Playhouse. Maybe the year-round facility is not the answer, maybe three or four months. There's a lot of businesses that are open three months. There's yacht clubs, there's golf clubs, there's private businesses that are open three months. Maybe we need to rethink the Playhouse. Maybe we only have it open for special events in the off months. If it looks like that event is not going to make a profit, we don't have the event. If it looks like it's going to make a good profit, we have the event. This three-person finance committee, again, my suggestion, you guys, I'm sure will come up with your own ideas, would be in charge and possibly come up with other ideas and a budget and probably do some of that already. This, the Playhouse manager would or could report to this finance committee. Again, thank you first for your time, I support the hundred thousand, but we need oversight and we need to make sure it gets paid back. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I think this'll work. My name is Frank Bennerick and I am the co-chair of the Capital Campaign and I'm currently the chair of the Friends of the Playhouse, the 501(c) corporation that is solely committed to supporting the Playhouse and the revenue for the Playhouse. And I'm here to support the loan resolution that is, that is being prepared. When we did the Capital Campaign, the whole idea of the Capital Campaign was a hundred-year program. We wanted to save the Playhouse for the next hundred years. And when we look at, when the friends look at the Playhouse and the work that we're doing in support of the Playhouse, we're also taking the long-term view. And it was mentioned that COVID hit us hard, well, it is true, but remember that two years before COVID, we were closed as we were building the new facility. And then we were open for a brief time and then we had to close again because of COVID. And what that does to a theater or any type of production like that, you lose your audience. And we've, we've really started over in the last eighteen months to build that audience again. And it's been, it's been a struggle because first of all, we don't have any money to advertise, so if you look at the budget, if you look carefully at the budget, we're struggling to cover the operating costs and when you put in a summer season, you need to advertise it. People don't know about it unless you do. That creates a, a, a big dilemma for us as to how we make that come about and what the friends have done to do that is that we've started a membership program so you can be a friend member of the Playhouse. And the way you become a friend member is if you contribute fifty dollars to five hundred thousand dollars, if you will, to the Playhouse and you become a friend. Or you can buy season flex tickets and become a friend as well. And this year, we increased our friends by twenty-three by doing that. So we have, then we had gifts from one thousand to five thousand dollars. And the total effort brought in about fifteen thousand dollars for our first drop. The second thing that we did was create an event for the opening of the summer season and we invited all of the people who committed to the Capital Campaign, which there were three hundred and fifty-three to come to the event, as well as other supporters of the Playhouse. And we had about eighty people come and we asked for support and to, to make contributions, do sponsorships for the Playhouse and we raised over ten thousand that night. We're planning a similar event coming up this spring to again announce the summer season and we're looking at making that an annual fundraising event. In addition to that, we worked very hard to sell season tickets for the flex passes and we did, we were successful in selling forty-eight of those and we ended up having almost five thousand people buy tickets this last year. And again, all of our effort is to look at how we stage things to keep improving those numbers. And it's, it's primarily word of mouth, there's, there's advertising, but it's also the word of mouth. People are aware that the Playhouse is open and it's also what the stage at the Playhouse. And just this week, we, well, last week actually, we mailed, hard nailed to two hundred potential donors to consider a gift for the year-end giving and over two thousand emails were sent soliciting a gift for giving, giving. The plans for the future are really what the foundation board looks at most and and we do understand we have to get, we want to get the theater to operate in the black and that's the primary goal. But there are secondary goals that we want, we want to see it established in an endowment campaign. Those three hundred and fifty-three donors gave us about three million, eight hundred thousand dollars. And we think that there's more resources there and that we can, we can make some effort on an endowment fund. We're also looking at other support for the theater and all of our committee, our, some of our Capital Campaign people and our, our friends committee is here tonight. And we're all individually contacting people to see if they will become members, if they'll be sponsors and there's quite a bit of work going on that. It's a result. One last thing that I would mention is that we created a new theater and it's mentioned that maybe we should go back to a four-month season, that, that could be a possibility. I, that would have to be studied, I think, but we do have the ability to be open year-round, but it's a trick, it's like a new startup. What do you put in there for, what do you do? We know we have a good summer season, we had a good one this last year. But what do we do in the meantime, what do we do in the interim? And we're learning that trick, we just, the last week did a balloon program for young people and sold the theater out. So there are things that are coming, there's, the Friday nights events are doing better. And what we're looking at is to close that gap and where we would be closing that gap is in the, in that, in those eight months of the non-summer, the non-summer theater. But we are aware of that. And we think that the ten-year loan will pay dividends, we think the theater pays dividends and that the ten-year loan will allow us to continue to grow. And we're very much interested in assisting the city and covering this deficit. And we want to thank you for your support and your continued support.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak?
Hello, my name is Amber Helloel. I've been a volunteer and a parent of students who love and appreciate the Playhouse very much and I'm speaking out in support of that today. And we've been involved with the Playhouse for about eight years now and I've been very grateful for the opportunities that my children have been given because of all of the workshops and the educational opportunities. I think that we are eager to work in any way that we can to help the, the Playhouse stay open and be profitable. It's a great idea to shorten the season, but I think you're overlooking the children who are so appreciative of the classes and workshops that can only be offered when the Playhouse isn't super busy with the summer season. This is such a unique opportunity that you don't see within at least forty minutes of our area and you have to go all the way up to Manistee to find another youth program like this. And so I, I just want to again express my appreciation for the Playhouse and would implore you to think about all the youth that travel over thirty miles to be a part of the productions and the workshops and how reliant they are for this access to the arts. It is something that makes Whitehall really unique and a beautiful place to live and the arts is what gives it the, the flavor and the beauty. So, yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Deanna Stembel. I'm a local resident with four children, all of whom have been involved with the youth program at the Playhouse. It's been approximately thirteen years. And so I just wanted to take a minute to speak out about how valuable I feel that has been for my children, but for the community at large and the surrounding communities. It is something that is not quantifiable in dollars, but it is an investment in the future of the Playhouse and in our children. These children are coming for workshops, they are coming for performances, they are coming for the community. The theater welcomes them, they go above and beyond to mentor them. I've had children who have ended up being interns there as they reach college age. My thirteen-year-old is still involved with the Youth Theater Council. The adults who are running the youth theater go way, way above and beyond to bring everyone in and to nurture their individual talents. And they are nurturing the future theater goers in this community. People who will grow up and have beautiful memories of their time there, people who will return there for shows, people who will support the theater in the future. So I just wanted to say in closing, it is a very rare program, it's very valuable in my opinion for this community, for the young people coming up who will be the adults going to the theater of the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Ruth Skinner, I'm a lifelong resident of Whitehall. And I spent practically all of my working career as a bookkeeper for small businesses, which I know is different than a city. But I helped prepare the books for both businesses that I worked for when they wanted and needed to go to the bank for a loan. And the one thing they needed to prove is that it can be paid back. How can we be assured that this hundred thousand dollars can be paid back when they have an operating loss in a busy quarter, what should be a busy quarter of the year, of seventy-seven thousand dollars? I don't think they've got the funds to pay this back or that the, it's, or that they will have in the foreseeable future. This is going to be a long haul for them to dig out of the dirt. And I am opposed to the city loaning my tax money to a losing cause. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Kim Hardy, one three nine one G Street. I do not think the city council should be in the business of loaning money to any business. That is not the purpose of my city council. You are taking my tax dollars and are these wonderful people who are supporting the theater, are they even residents and taxpayers of Whitehall? My understanding is the Playhouse was given a loan and they reneged on thirty thousand dollars. If you reneged on any loan, do you go back to that lender and ask for more money? That doesn't seem right to me either. If this Playhouse wants to go, go on to continue, it should be self-supporting. Do not come to me to help you with that. I'm adamantly opposed to you spending my tax dollars for this.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Sky Harsh and I'm a resident and taxpayer in Whitehall. Thank you for opening the floor up for the community to speak today. I am also an alumni of Whitehall Community Schools and I'm also an alumni of the theater program and a, a former employee of the Playhouse. And as you, as you've heard today, quite a few community members feel that there is immense, immeasurable value to the community with this theater and particularly with our youth programming. I, I think what I would like to harp on the most importantly is that this is a public service and a public good. This is an asset that's owned by the city of Whitehall for the community members. And now my tax money, my local tax dollars in my understanding are garnered to support those public services and the workers that make those public services available to us. I believe this is no different than say our local libraries, our public schools, our parks. This is a community space that has immeasurable impact and has for over a century in our small community. It is a very unique asset that we have and I believe it is both the city and every taxpayer's responsibility to help the survival of this over a century old asset. An investment in a social service, as I'm still a nonprofit and social service worker myself, I know that the investment is not an immediate return on investment, but what it is, is an investment in our community, in our public services, in a community space that is dwindling, our third space is dwindling. And it's an investment in our youth, which without, we will not have a community in the future. So thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Eli Zoll, I'm a resident of the city of Whitehall, also a taxpayer of the city. Uh, my, my comments are kind of all over the place, I was writing some things down while I was sitting there listening to everybody, but so give me a few seconds to kind of get my thoughts together. First of all, it's pretty funny, when I first found out, I heard some, some comments saying it's like a wedding, bride and groom side of the and I didn't realize what the heck was going on, but anyway. No, I kind of understand, it was kind of funny. But anyways, I, you know, I saw a lot of things on social media the past week about this particular event and I thought people were going to be coming here with pitchforks and stuff like that about the Playhouse and anyway, I'm just coming here not to, neither here nor there, but what can we do? I think this Playhouse is a part of our community. We could sit here and do nothing about it, right, and then it's going to be this anchor in our community over here or we could do something about it, right, and make it successful. I think having a Playhouse in the, in the city is, makes the city a lot more valuable and like a fun place to live and all that kind of stuff here. So, you know, I'm going all over the place, but, so I'm fairly new to the city, I've only been here for five years, so I don't have any perceived old I've only been here for five years, so I haven't had any perceived, old received in comments or opinions about what happened here beforehand. But we have this beautiful Playhouse, it's a three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-seat Playhouse. So Scott, I know you asked a question about the ticket pass rule. I was one time looking at promoting a show myself over there, trying to make, you know, trying to make the numbers work. Unfortunately, the act I was trying to bring in here was a bit expensive. I couldn't get the numbers to work and there were some things I worked with the manager or with the Playhouse. But I think instead of having guys like me trying to promote it and make money, I think the Playhouse should do more events and make more money out of it. I had no clue that these events, this friends, or the Playhouse even existed. I'm here over here, never donated a single penny, I didn't know anything about that. Maybe that's part of our problems here. I don't think we're marketing this place well enough. I, that's my opinion. Sorry if I kind of step on people's toes or... And I mean, there's so many things. I think the theater, well, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven, we can do so much more. I think we can have more shows on here, but I don't know if we have to only rely on the twenty-five-hundred people who live in Whitehall and the twenty-five-hundred people who live in Maniou to support this thing. How do we get up to the fifty-thousand people within a thirty-five-mile radius between Muskegon, Harv, all these other places to bring over here? I've been to theater in Fremont, I get emails from them. I think that you've got to do a better job in marketing this place. I think there's a lot of things we can do here, comedy acts, you know. I mean, even show a movie or something, not even a movie, but have the Detroit Lions playing over there. We can kind of sell tickets for that kind of stuff. We have a great thing going on. I think we can do so much more. I loved your idea, what you said about the committee, because I came here thinking, maybe we should put a committee together. We were talking about it, me and my neighbors yesterday, thinking, you know, this Playhouse is a great thing, but I don't know if it's being managed a hundred percent to its potential, we think we can do a lot more. So with that, I don't know where everybody's opinions are. I hear what you're saying about the taxes. I pay taxes too, I understand you. I, I, believe me, I've been up here talking to the city saying, hey, be good service of our money, of our tax pay, know what we do. But it's here, if we don't do nothing, we can shut it down. Now we're going to be living with this Playhouse over here in our neighborhood, you know, whatever's going to happen with the shutdown facility. So I kind of support, we got to do something. I don't know what that something is, but I'm willing to volunteer and support with you guys on a, on the committee, look at different ideas for that, because I think we have to do something to help this Playhouse. I'm not here or there, but I just think we got to do more to increase the revenue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amanda Hunt-Kiefer. So Hunt from the other side. So you'll allow me to speak here tonight. It's a little hot in here. I'm returning to the community in White Lake. And part of doing that is that I want to make sure that this place remains the way it was when I grew up. And a lot of the important things, like the Playhouse, need to stay viable. That being said, it's obvious that there's some mismanagement going on. I also have never heard of the Friends of the Playhouse, so I would like to propose a new oversight committee, a board, to relay information back and forth to the city council and work with the manager of the Playhouse to come up with ideas that are viable. Some of the ideas that you gave are great. There's a million events you can do at a place like this to generate income. A hundred thousand dollars can be made in a weekend. This is, that's small potatoes if you have the right type of event to hold at the place. The facility exists, the lights are on, it's renovated. This is easy with the type of people that care about this place to make it profitable. So I suggest that you put in place a board of directors that can relay back to you, let the manager or whoever you are paying at the Playhouse to be directly in charge of that has to okay everything through the board before they spend the money. So that's where the oversight can come in, the money can be made sure that it's being used properly. And then people like myself that have ideas and want to lend ourselves to the betterment of the community can do so in a useful way.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, if there's no one else, we'll move on to the agenda. Business, I don't believe we have any more business to attend to.
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Homet-I F T Public Hearing. Scott, you want to give us a... Talk on what this is all about?
Yep, Homet Aerospace is constructing a facility over a hundred thousand square feet. It looks like about a hundred-million-dollar investment with three-hundred new full-time jobs. They're asking, or have submitted an application for an industrial facility tax exemption, which is a tax abatement. And this request is before council to schedule the public hearing for your next meeting December tenth.
So we're asking for a resolution to schedule a public hearing, December tenth.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, December tenth, at six P M for the Homet application for I F T. Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion on this?
Good question.
Yes.
This question is for Will. Well, just to clarify, so my organization has a grant from Homet Aerospace. And we talked a little bit about conflict of interest. Do, is this a conflict, no?
No, this is...
Okay.
Yep, no.
I would ask about the, is there... You plan going to call for twelve-year abatement to the taxes? I would suggest that there's an alternative for eight years. That's what I'd prefer. We've already given six-hundred thousand dollars for site prep.
I believe that's a discussion for the public hearing.
Okay. Then...
I mean, this is just a schedule of public hearing where we can all bring these questions to the table.
Okay.
To Tom's point, we have probably all kind of worn out, the worn-out are welcome with the, with the abatement. So I would love to have the public, love to set this meeting and have the public come and give us their thoughts on that.
I didn't think it was appropriate when we gave twelve-year abatement to highlight recently, when they didn't even ask for it till they were halfway done building it.
All right. Any further discussion on this? Do we need a roll call, Scott?
No, sir.
All right. All those in favor of the public hearing on December tenth, say yes.
Yes.
Or say no? All right, the public hearing will be December tenth. Welcome the public's opinion at that meeting. That's where we'll be discussing everything that's in the request. Next up is Resolution twenty-four forty, meeting scheduled.
Homet, do you have a question? Pass Resolution twenty-four forty, council meeting scheduled.
Second. Moving second, is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I have a question. The attached meeting schedule, the adopted segment, meeting time for six P M on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Now, doesn't this also include the...
The work session?
The work session, which I thought was always the first of the... First meeting of the month. I guess I read it though. I'm sorry.
Fine.
How did I get that?
No problem.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Phil O'Gran?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sitindo?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Soltar?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next up is Resolution twenty-four forty-one, Police Cruiser. I will move Resolution twenty-four forty-one for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four interceptor.
Second.
Moving second, is there any discussion on this?
I have a bunch of questions. Most of them are probably going to be for the chief man, I think. How many, how many Cruisers did we have before the accident?
You may need a three to four Cruisers, one sec, go ahead.
Other than like special events, parades, or what have you, how often are all these vehicles being used at the same time?
At the same time?
Yes.
You're right, only at those special events.
So we've gotten along with one less vehicle for right now, without a whole lot of problems.
It's, yes, we can manage. If we were to lose one of those Cruisers, we'd have two, and then it would be difficult to manage. It's not unheard of to be down more than one car at a time. And if we were to reduce the Cruiser's number, we would simply increase the use of one Cruiser and increase the replacement time or require replacement sooner than the system that we have. And we actually, right now, have two Cruisers that have over a hundred thousand miles. The one that just crashed had almost a hundred thousand miles. And the newest one we have is probably somewhere on forty.
So are you saying that a vehicle with a hundred thousand miles on it isn't any good anymore?
It's, it's been, it's, at the end of its good service life, because then it starts to nickel and dime us to death. That's why we've been paying about seventeen thousand dollars a year in the repair budget.
Well, I guess the last thing I have for you then is probably not going to do any good because there's three two-thousand-seventeen Ford Police Cruisers on the state website right now that are for sale. And they all have over a hundred thousand miles on them, so I would assume you're probably not interested in them. But I think the, not just the police department, but the entire city needs to learn to live within its budget. And I'm sorry, one of the vehicles got totaled. But I'm definitely not in favor of spending any more money than what you recover, you know, from the insurance company for the loss. You've got to learn to live within your means and, same as everybody else does. Either that or you go out and get a loan. You don't just ask for the city to pay for the rest of it.
It's the city's car.
Correct?
Yes.
So I, what I'm saying is I don't think we should be spending any more money than the fifteen thousand that we got for one vehicle total.
So you would like us to buy a car that's already ended in service life?
Now, I don't agree with you that a hundred thousand miles is, is the end of a service license of a vehicle. If it is, you're buying the wrong kind of vehicles.
It's a police vehicle. There's a difference between a personal vehicle and a police vehicle.
A vehicle's a vehicle.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. Well, it is to me.
Oh, it is to you, but it's not appropriate.
Okay. On the, on the average, do we have one crashed, totaled vehicle every year? Just curious.
No.
No. Not even close.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that there was an alternative. Nobody's interested in it, but there is an alternative to save, save some money.
Any further comments? Roll call please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Phil O'Gran?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Sitindo?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Soltar?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four forty-two is approved. Twenty-four forty-one, sorry. Next is twenty-four forty-two, Playhouse Finances.
I move to refer this resolution to a special committee, including the house staff, city council members, the city manager, other appropriate staff, community members as need to explore alternative funding options and sustainable solutions. The committee will report back with recommendations.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion, it's been moved consecutive, is there any discussion on this?
I, I want to follow up, that I think that it's, I fully support the Playhouse. I was actually on council when we, when we agreed to take on the Playhouse. I've also written about it, I've written about its history. So I think it's a very important institution for our community. And, and I feel that we need to support it. I do think it's important to take maybe a different approach to this question. And I think that by forming a special committee with all of these different perspective and ideas, and we've even had it, it's almost like you were reading my mind this afternoon, because I had this written out beforehand. We can get some ideas and perspectives. And the goal is to explore all potential options, different funding sources, partnerships, long-term sustainability strategies. I even recommend bringing in some outside experts to sit with us to talk about what we can do before making any final decisions. I think that'll give us the time and the input needed to develop a well-thought-out plan that balances both the Playhouse's needs and our city's fiscal responsibility. The committee will then bring back their recommendations and that will help us make informed decisions going forward.
I think for me, it's not a matter of, I'm fully in support of the theater. I enjoy it myself, I live right next to it. I mean, it's a fabulous building, I think people work really hard to keep it going. There are lots of factors that came, that brought us to this situation. And we, I also understand that it's, that to make this move would be coming from taxpayer dollars, that, so there's discussion, I think. So taking a step back and looking at, you know, forming a committee, figuring out where we can go and how we can make it sustainable is a smart decision at this point. So I'm absolutely in support of that idea.
And I would say, you know, I'm, I like the Playhouse, I'm glad it's here. I think it's a shame that it's been managed so poorly. Like somebody said, there was a thirty-thousand-dollar loan forgiven just two years ago, maybe three years ago. You know, we're not having nearly enough events in it to make it profitable yet. Our operating expenses are over three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars a year, which if you do the math, that comes out to fifty-nine thousand, six-hundred, fifty-nine thousand, fifty-nine-hundred-sixty-six dollars a week. Well, you know, the kind, the number of events we're having, I think I saw the number was twenty-one last year, plus a couple of rentals, a wedding. Silly to think that you could make that work. We need to have more events, we need to have better management on it. I'm not opposed to having a board or something like that, but they need to be effective at generating some customers and some income. And, you know, as far as this thing here, for a hundred thousand, a loan for a hundred thousand dollars that may or may not get paid back, I'm a no vote on that. But I'm open to some alternatives, and I'm disappointed that nobody's had any alternatives or ideas until we get to this point, we have the gun to our head, you know.
But Tom, can you speak to the motion at hand, which is...
Okay, what am I supposed to do?
Can you speak to the motion at hand, which is forming the committee?
Forming the committee?
Yes.
What exactly is it? I know you had some, it was kind of long.
Okay, I'll use my teacher voice too. Okay, so what I was suggesting is a special committee, including the Playhouse staff, city council members, the city manager, other appropriate staff, community members, as solutions. I've been impressed with the fact that people have already stepped up and said they'd be willing to help out. I think it would help to also bring in some outside experts into this, so there'd be a special committee that would take a look at this question about, you know, how we got into a shortfall, the question of how we can make the Playhouse sustainable going forward. And so I'm suggesting setting up a committee.
That much I can follow.
I'm, I'm, yes. And so that's, that's what I think we're looking for input on at this, at least I am, with my motion.
I'll second.
It's been seconded.
I'm looking for...
You can third it, that's okay.
Jeff, do you want to?
I agree with them, I just, I call for the question. I mean, it's, it's... I mean, it's, it's, or is I'm concerned? I agree with companion Deb.
Scott?
The committee that you want to form, you said the playhouse staff, the city council, city staff, and so you're talking quite a large committee, correct?
It might be. It might be sizable. We might have to put somebody in charge.
I just wanted to make sure that I was included in it because if I wasn't, I wanted to volunteer for it, so.
Absolutely. You're on, if it's a go.
I'm with companion volunteering the word.
Steve?
I was gonna say lots of things about this when I came here today, but Mr. Prigle kinda summed it all up in a short statement there. And I think we need to have this committee that looks into all these finances and how did we get here? And how are we gonna pay it back? Because there has to be, you know, the city can't just loan money out at five percent and hope we're gonna get it back. We gotta have some kind of assurance that the city's gonna get paid back. So, and I think this committee could look into that and tell us how this is gonna work and show us a path forward. Because we've got committees that run the marina, we got committees that run the library, we got committees that run the Tifa board, we got committees that run just about everything. So I think we need to have a committee that's gonna help us run this playhouse, which seems to be not running very evenly or it's not coming along. And, you know, it took a long time for the marina to split it to black, and it finally did. And I was on the board at the same time Daniel was when we got this. And I thought, this is an amazing thing for a community of our size to have this, and it really is. And I think we need to figure out how to make it work because it is a really great asset for the city of Whitehall.
I would say too that the committee should have, we need to formalize what power the committee has. If they have the power of personnel and salaries and...
No, the committee, I ask, the committee will, will make, will brainstorm about what we need to do. And if forming a committee or board or directors is a recommendation, that may be. Whatever the recommendations are from the committee will come back to council. And then we'll go from there. And then there's a way that's formed to be more of a liaison.
Before we get involved in organizing the committee, we need to consult with legal. What are the legal options we have here?
I mean, you can appoint, appoint a committee like you've got these, somebody mentioned Marina Committee. It would be similar to that arrangement.
You mean, the Marina Committee does not run the Marina.
No.
The Marina Committee is a Marina Advisory Board that reports to the council.
Right.
The ultimate authority comes back to the council.
Right, which is where the ultimate authority is right now with the playhouse. And some of those, some of those obligations are then, you know, delegated back to staff for certain decisions, but the ultimate authority is with you. And if you have a committee, an advisory committee, would come back and make recommendations. And it could be a temporary committee or be a permanent committee. That could be part of what they end up recommending. But right now, you can certainly appoint a committee to provide advice on how to proceed.
And my motion is to set up a special committee. So this is not a standing committee, it's not advisory committee.
Right, not a permanent committee, it's a temporary.
It's a temporary committee to take a look at this, to look at all of the options, to look at some of the suggestions people have made, and make recommendations to this council.
I believe our charter doesn't allow for standing committees.
Special committees?
I believe it allows for special advisory committees.
Special advisory, yes. Not a standing committee.
Right.
Correct.
We won't stand up.
I would, I would request that probably our next council meeting is a work session is that staff present some sort of formal structure for this committee, for the council to kick around. And I would like to express displeasure with some disparaging comments about the mismanagement. There's been nothing more than absolute dedication and every effort to make the playhouse viable financially and as a community asset amongst the staff.
I, I, I support the playhouse. It's a valuable asset to this community. I'm, I think we're so unique to have, we have something that's spectacular in our community. I think we, the majority of the people in this community support it. I think there's a, there's some issues that need to be addressed. And I fully support a community to get together and look and see what we can do to make this successful in the, in the, in the black. It's actually, it's a department of the city. I mean, the city owns it. It's ours, it's an asset. We need to support it. The discussion here is how we can best do that. Forming a committee with the council, staff, and the public. We want everybody to have a place at that table with the outcome that the playhouse remains viable in our community.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is, is it possible to get recommendations and some ideas from this committee who are been appointed so that we know going forward that there's a good plan in place to pay back to the hundred thousand dollar loan? Can we know, you know, have some kind of a idea that, yeah, we think this is gonna work before we just throw a hundred thousand dollars?
I think that's what the committee is, is doing. Coming up with a solution financially.
Thank you.
So I, I believe we have a motion on the table.
And a support, yeah.
And that motion is to create, waiting to look at the playhouse. Let's have a roll call on that, please.
Kabala?
Yes.
Pilbrand?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Sidinda?
Yes.
Salted?
Yes.
Thank you all for that. Next up? I don't think we need to do anything with the existing twenty-four forty-two.
It was referred, yeah.
Right. The resolution that, or the motion that passed is a motion, but it's not a numbered resolution. Or is it?
I voted to refer it to committee, which is correct on the rubber rules, I believe.
Correct, yeah. I believe you start off by saying table the resolution and refer to a committee.
On table, okay. I don't know, I checked, I checked today's.
Yeah, I think you did.
So that's what we've done. We've tabled twenty-four forty-two. Okay, I want everybody to know that that's what we're doing here. So, resolution twenty-four forty-three, Climate Mobilization Action Plan. Scott, please.
Yeah, basically, we have the three reports dealing with ways to save energy and finances for the playhouse, city hall, and public works facilities. Department heads have talked about this a couple of times, and we just don't really have staff readily available. And we're not looking for any expertise. We're looking for somebody who can actually take the plan, go to contractors. One of the issues is the aging furnaces here at city hall. So that person would go touch base with Boardwell and Shide and some other furnace companies and just say, give us an estimate so we can take that forward to the council for consideration at a future budget period. Part of this was, I think, talking to Cindy Beth about this, is that she is capable of doing this. She's not an energy expert. I found that after reading the reports, I'm even less of an energy expert. But it would also reduce some of the burden on the playhouse by shifting some of her duties away from the playhouse and actually have a body that's currently on staff versus trying to find somebody from the outside to come in and start working on this. I would, I guess that's the, that's it in a nutshell.
So, we have resolution twenty-four forty-three in front of us.
We need a motion?
We need a motion, yeah. We need a motion to, we're gonna discuss it.
I'll make a motion to put twenty-four forty-three Climate Mobilization Action Plan on the table.
I'll say.
Motion in, second, let's have a discussion.
Well, first off, I wanna, I wanna thank Scott for following through with the, we got the free help from the state to look at, I think primarily, energy efficiency issues. It looks like it was very thorough.
Well, we talked to, typically, they will only do one facility per community, but we talked to them to do all three.
Good, good, good job. I think it's very thorough. I think it's very good information. I mean, even for myself, I found it a little bit here and there to wade through, to make some sense of. I'm not quite sure, I know the biggest suggestion was to have a manager to make sure all of this happened. And I know Cindy Beth, I mean, she was our second, second, uh, playhouse manager, exceptionally capable. I, I think, I've got a couple of questions, though. I'm just wondering how it would all work. I mean, I think there are a lot of good ideas. Some of them are gonna cost money. I'm concerned that a lot of this work might, you know, somebody might go out and say, you know, bring something back. And then what level of authority does Cindy Beth have to, like, either make decisions? Or, you know, I'm assuming she'll bring things to council? Or is she gonna bring things to department heads? Are they gonna, how is that gonna work?
It's gonna be a combination. Obviously, some of the low to no-cost items can be dealt with in-house. Changing light bulbs and unplugging our furnaces, so, or our space heaters. But obviously, some of the larger things, there was discussion about implementing solar. That would have to be something that we'd have to explore a lot more details and costs and bring to council for review and approval.
Will she have an actual position description that, that, that we'd be able to see? I think, I just am familiar with situations where there's been a person appointed to do the internal sustainability at a, you know, within a department. And the people that I've known have found it very challenging to get people to, to do the thing. You know what I mean? And that, I think that would, that's the only question I have. I'm not questioning Cindy Beth's capability at all, but I'm just questioning, you know, is, is this level of commitment, is this something that we're gonna be able to follow through with, with, with the information that they provided us, which I think is good? So, I mean, I'm, that's kind of rambling, and I apologize, but I...
Let's let others pop in.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, again, will echo that I have no doubt that Cindy Beth is capable. I wonder if this is also a situation where we might have a small committee of people to volunteer to do it. It, it is sometimes difficult to make these kinds of changes internally. There are a lot of things, like you said, you can manage in-house, just changing the light bulb. So I would, in addition to where things are pulling money out of the general fund at the moment, as, you know, after the storm, I know we had to, we had to manage that as well. So our general fund is taking a huge hit. I'm not sure now is the right time to move on this financial piece of, of an energy manager. Maybe a committee to start and then see where that, you know, see where it goes, what needs longer term.
Well, if I can chime in, we can certainly hold off on this. I know that there's been some, some push from council in the past and supported by staff to be more energy efficient, reduce our carbon footprint. But I would caution that a committee needs to not delve into operational, day-to-day activities. A committee should strictly be advisory.
Can you come in and to hold off a little bit?
I, I think there's a lot of, it sounds like there's a lot of low-hanging fruit that doesn't need a manager.
Correct.
That's my opinion.
Correct.
They're not using the programmable thermostats, you know, that's, doesn't need a manager. You film on the window out here, that's a good idea. There's some things like that. As far as getting into solar energy and stuff, I would rather put that up low anyway. I think the complicated stuff may need a manager, but, you know, I think the timing for that would be later, in my opinion.
Jeff?
I'm in concurrence with them. I think that, like Tom said, I think the low-hanging fruit, we'll get what we can get and work towards budgeting the rest based on what we got. Items go up or taxes go up, we have plenty of that. Well, it's fine, but everybody knows we got other items hanging out there, roads, et cetera, et cetera, that are gonna take a lot more funds than probably what we can put into this.
Scott?
I pretty much concur with most everybody else. I, looking at the back of this page, it has the numbers on it. I don't even understand what I'm looking at. We got Cindy Beth for twenty-five thousand dollars for the playhouse. Then we got an energy manager for nine thousand dollars under that. And then we have Motorpool for eighty-one hundred dollars, and we have City Hall for twelve thousand nine hundred. I don't understand what these numbers are.
Basically, you need to read them left or right. Currently, Cindy Beth is earning twenty-five thousand dollars. That cost is all being incurred by the playhouse. As the energy manager, we would spread that out between the playhouse, Motorpool, and city hall. That's the second line down. And I base the distribution on the anticipated savings in those three, three facilities. So the playhouse would still be covering nine thousand dollars of the energy manager's salary, Motorpool eighty-one hundred, and the big-ticket item is here at city hall, twelve-nine. So that's just kind of how I figured out we could break it out.
I don't understand, no.
Anything else?
No.
Steve? The only thing I wonder is each one of these three reports establish energy manager, several dollars to low cost. Is five thousand dollars a year low cost for an energy manager?
Um, well, I guess it depends on your perspective.
Yeah. It just seems like, yeah, I guess if we're gonna save fifty-one thousand a year, five thousand doesn't seem like a lot. But like we said, a lot of that can be done just by, you know, it's, it's common sense stuff that we, that we can do it. There is a lot of good ideas in there. But as, as everybody else said, the more expensive stuff needs to be looked at separately. And so that's just my comments.
Yes.
Is it possible for, it's gotta lodge on somebody's position, otherwise it's not gonna get, I mean, it's gotta go somewhere if we're gonna get anything done. But is it possible to look through this and pull out kind of a plan of this, this, and this, 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 and this? And then, you know, I'd, I'd like to be kept abreast of it, but, you know, if there's, you know, twenty-five low-hanging fruit, I'd like to see the schedule of, you know, how we're gonna do that. Because I think, I think this is all good information. I'm glad the city did it. I don't wanna just brush it aside, but I think if we could lay out a, you know, here's, here's how we're gonna tackle the first, you know, group of items, I'd like to see that. And then I'd like to see who's kind of, who is kind of responsible for making sure that it happens.
We can do that.
So, based on what I've heard, we have a motion to approve. I would ask, suggest you withdraw your motion to approve and ask, ask for a motion to put it on the next work session.
Scott did the motion.
Steve did.
Yeah.
I don't remember who seconded it.
Cabala?
Oh, I seconded it.
This, this topic.
Just withdraw it. Most should just withdraw.
Unless we, unless you just want to table it?
No, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so you withdraw your second?
Motion was to put it on the table, look for a discussion.
Right.
And you withdraw it? And I, I could withdraw mine, although I don't mind. I'd kind of like your idea to put it to a work session. Is that possible too?
It's possible to have a work session and, and discuss this further. I think you would give us another two weeks to chew on this and.
Sure.
Get public input.
Do you want to change your motion?
Or create a new?
Create a new motion to put it on a work session? Or could we, we could just recommend that it be put on the next work session?
Okay, then I'll remove, I'll remove my second then.
Everyone's good with that?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go on the next work session. We're going to discuss this Climate Mobilization Action Plan again. All right, that leaves us with public comment. This is where the students would step forward and introduce themselves and tell us their, their teacher.
Why, hello. I have a number from Mr. Brunson's Monty U. Government class. And I'm just here for fifty points. I can't lie. It's fifty points.
You've earned them tonight.
Thank you.
You got some government.
We've got real government, right?
Yeah, right? Tell me about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Papers after rules, including the meeting.
Thank you.
I'm Colin Smith from Mr. Brunson's class in Monty U.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caleb Hoffman, and I'm from Mr. Brunson's class. I'm the same region as Kayden.
All right. Does anyone else in this room have anything they want to say? Hearing none? We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.